Good evening. It is now six P M. And welcome to the community development meeting dated November eighteenth. I'm the Chair Lewis Washington. Today's meeting is being recorded and will be available on the city's website. So thank you very much for joining us. We'll start with a simple roll call. Looks like here. Councilmember Johnson, Madam Mayor.
I'm here.
And City Clerk. And looks like we have the Finance Director joining us today.
That is correct. Thank you, Chair.
Yeah, thank you, sir. Full house. Okay, so everyone's accounted for. First thing, first item of regular business is to approve the agenda.
So move.
All right, agenda approved. No questions there. At this time, we will provide time for residents to provide public comment. Is there anyone here wanting to provide public comment here in the audience? Okay, I don't see anyone. I think we've suspended indefinitely the online public comments. Is that correct, Madam Mayor? Okay, so unfortunately, we won't allow online public comments. So if there's no one here for public comment, I will close the public comment section of our meeting. Okay, we now move to our next agenda item, which is the approval of the minutes that are dated, meeting minutes dated November fourth, two thousand and twenty-four.
So move.
No questions on the meeting minutes? Okay, sounds good. All too fast tonight. So without further ado, the next item on our agenda is Agenda Bill two, four, one, nine, excuse me, two, A B two, four dash one, one, nine. And that is the adoption of the two thousand twenty-four, two thousand twenty-nine King County Flood Management Plan and the City of Snoqualmie jurisdiction annexation. And at this time, I will turn the meeting over to Director Artic.
Yes, thank you. Good evening, councilmembers. As you know, we actively manage our floodplain and participate in a community rating system. And we do an annual and a five-year recertification. And this effort is paralleled at the county level. They are the ones that recently adopted the King County Flood Management Plan. It was last adopted about ten years ago, and this is a refresh. So this item is coming forward to you for the adoption by resolution. So our community rating system and FEMA knows that we have an annexation in this plan that speaks to and helps control our own flood mitigation. So with this, we continue to be certified. We continue to have, you know, FEMA's recognition that we participate in the program. And we do it formally with this adoption of resolution. So I don't want to overthink this at all, but basically that's what this is in a nutshell, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, I'll open up to the committee for any questions at this point. Councilmember Johnson.
Then the annexation, is that like a specific plot of land that the city intends to annex or the could annex? Or is this just speaking very generically about the concept of annexing land and how that relates to floods?
Yeah, it is not. The word is not intended to reference in any more land coming into the city. It's it's an addition, like an appendix or like additional component. So we're one of the few, if I think maybe only cities, that has a little carve out for Snoqualmie, so they can really get into the detail. So if you click on these links and open up the plan, you'll see Snoqualmie mentioned over and over and over again about how flood floodplain management is regulated with our input and specific to our city.
Okay, so annexed in this context doesn't mean adding more land to the city. It's a completely different meaning of the word annex.
Correct. And I don't know why they call it that, but that's what they call it. It might tie back to some terminology at the FEMA level.
Okay, any other questions from Madam Mayor or the staff? Yeah, no, I had a chance to go through it. It's pretty lengthy. So I mean, it makes a lot of sense to me, and at this point, I'm I'm fine moving it forward to council.
Can we put it on consent agenda?
Oh, let's see here. One second. I think it's a ordinance. An ordinance can go on consent.
Ordinances cannot, resolutions can.
So we can't because it's an ordinance.
It is not an ordinance. It's a resolution.
Yeah, I would support recommending consent agenda.
Okay. Yep, it's a resolution, yep. The next one's Thank you. I'm fine with consent agenda. Does that work for you? Okay, consent agenda it is.
Great, thank you so much.
You're welcome. Okay, so yeah, probably don't want to go too far. Our next item of business is Agenda Bill two, four dash zero, nine, six Transportation Impact Fees. Excuse me, Transportation Impact Fee Program.
Right, so you have an agenda bill before you. This is a follow up from previous discussions at C D Committee when we talked about developing a rate study and a traffic impact fee program. We were finally at a state now where we have a draft resolution and a completed rate study. And tonight we have our transportation planning consultant, long tenured here with the city, Chris Braylon, to walk you through what that rate study means and how this program would function. You can see that there is an ordinance attached to it and is scheduled to go to the City Council on Monday. Chris?
Sounds good. Thank you, Director.
All right, thank you, and good evening, councilmembers. Let me quickly, I made a, if you read the the rate study, good, good for you. I don't expect everybody wants to read something like that, but I created a quick little PowerPoint just to sort of touch on really just, I think, the high points here. Share this. Okay, so again, we presented here previously a little bit of the why we would consider doing an impact fee program here in Snoqualmie. Just wanted to provide just sort of the little bit of recap there and then just get to the get to the end point. Impact fee programs are part of the Growth Management Act. Growth Management Act said that cities have to invest in their transportation system to support growth over time. And to facilitate that, the law at the same time passed a funding mechanism to do that, which are impact fees. So they're a one-time charge to new development or any substantial change of use that would trigger a permit. And they're there to build out transportation capacity on a specifically defined improvement list that the city adapts. And they're really part of a bigger funding strategy. They're not intended to be the only way to fund transportation. They just give you, really, it's a leverage point to take advantage of other funds. So bottom line, we've completed the rate study, worked with city staff to identify a realistic set of improvements that we could see over the next twenty years to facilitate growth in the city by people using all modes. Came up with around about a one hundred million dollar project list. There's a, we can get into the details of that, but there's a wide variety of projects in there. And we're looking to establish a sixteen point nine million dollar impact fee program, really to leverage and help bring those hundred million dollars of investments online faster than we might otherwise be able to because we can use these things for grants or other sorts of matches to get things moving along. The little table there really shows the kind of the crux of the rate study, how the numbers break apart based on legal and technical requirements set forth in the G M A. Happy to answer any questions there. But this is a fairly typical outcome for setting up an impact fee program. One thing that's not in the rate study but often gets asked is, well, what does this mean? How does this compare to other communities? Impact fees are new here in Snoqualmie, but they have been around for decades across the state. When working with staff, we we looked at a variety of points where the the fee could come in. And what we ended up with is something above the Western Washington average, but quite a bit lower than a lot of the neighboring jurisdictions and lower than a lot of the East King County jurisdictions that are out there. So we really was a compromise working with Public Works and Community Development Departments to figure out what's reasonable to raise. What is a good set of projects to to help fund, but not necessarily trying to go with a significantly higher rate? And that's a choice that you as councilmembers can weigh in as well. But that's where the the rate study is based on the project list that we have. And so I wanted to keep it really brief. If you have specific questions about the rate study or impact fees in general, happy to answer those questions here.
Yeah, so thank you very much for being here this evening. Now, this is this is good. I had a chance to go through the study. Can you go back to the last slide, please? Yes. Okay, so the arrow there, the red arrow.
Yes.
Is that the estimation of where we see Snoqualmie, kind of somewhere between Des Moines and Maple Valley?
Yeah, so the, everybody uses slightly different, this is called a base rate. People use different numbers for that. The number that's shown in the rate study, if you sort of put it on apples to apples basis with these other communities, yeah, right, kind of between Maple Valley and Des Moines there.
And so, I'm sorry, can you talk to what the numbers on the right, is that just an average?
So those are the numbers. So the the, so the easiest way to maybe think about this is that the number there on the right is what a person coming in to file an application would pay roundabout for a brand new single family home. That would be your transportation impact fee is that number. It scales bigger things that cause more impacts, like a supermarket or something is going to have to pay more. A accessory dwelling unit is going to pay less. But think of that as like, that's the cost to develop a single family home is probably the easiest way to think of that number.
Okay. Give us a moment, please, if you don't mind, sir.
Councilwoman.
Yes, oh, I'm sorry. Did you have a question?
Do you have a question? So how do you calculate then? Is it based on square foot of the building that's going to be built or how do you?
Yeah, at the core, it's based on how many trips does a development produce? So how much use do they put out onto the transportation system? And that gets back to a legal requirement that says that properties or developments that use more need to pay more, and those that use less need to pay less. How it is sort of operated at the city level is that somebody would say that I have a development. It is this type of land use. It is so many square feet or so many units of, say, if it's a multifamily project. And they will submit how many trips that generates. And we would verify that using sort of industry standard, what are called trip generation rates. So at the, for a typical developer, yes, it's based on size. But the root number gets back to how many people are basically walking in and out of the door of that development.
Councilmember Johnson.
So that was seventeen million over twenty years.
Yes.
Which averages eight hundred and fifty thousand per year. And we're expecting that much development, generally speaking. I mean, perhaps not literally annually. There could be something that comes in five years from now that is several million, and we don't have anything until then. So I get that it's averaged out a little bit, but that seems like a realistic amount of growth for the city over the next twenty years.
So yeah, where, yeah, that's a great question. Where'd that number come from? That came from the growth forecast handed down from P S R C that was used to evaluate the comprehensive plan growth. So effectively, that is what is forecasted, what the market brings and all sorts of other things are up in the air. But you raise a good point that in a community like Snoqualmie, I would expect the revenues to be quite lumpy. So if a larger project pops in, it can generate several million dollars of fee revenue all by itself. And then it might, you know, be stable for a while and no funding comes in, which is why the legislature in the in the law gives time to expend those funds because you might not necessarily have a project ready to go. So you have time to to basically obligate those so that you can keep pace with growth. But that's, that's kind of how the program would work.
Councilmember one.
Thank you, Chair. If I remember correctly, we passed the mill site plan, development plan, it referenced this work. If I'm correct, that because they would be coming on after we adopt this, that we left the door open in that develop, it was excluded from.
This wasn't on our radar at that point, but what was are different projects that could possibly result from it, such as helping invest in a stoplight or expanding the roundabout, things like that.
Yeah, so I can, yeah, yeah, step in a little bit because I was on, again, part of the city staff reviewing the mill site plan. In the mill site, there are a number of impacts identified that the mitigation is basically to be determined. When, at the time that permits are pulled, there'll be a subsequent traffic study done to identify potential impacts. And the mitigation was also just said that the mill site will pay proportionate share of mitigation. This type of impact fee program is exactly what most communities set up so that the impact or the mitigation is just to pay the fee. So if we see an impact at one of the projects, lists of the, a site listed in the project, like some of the intersections along the parkway, then they pay the fee and that counts as their mitigation. It's a much simpler process. There's no additional study that they need to hire out. And there's no negotiation that needs to go on with the city. They just write a check and off they go for those particular impacts.
Councilmember Johnson. And staff can correct me if I'm wrong, but also I think that without this, we're kind of just sort of asking, please, these are going to be the impacts. And it would be really nice if you helped us with that with developments like the mill site, whereas this would be, they're going to have the impact. This is the cost of the impact, and that way they can't say, no, we don't feel like helping out. This says they can't do that. They would be paying the fee.
Yeah, they they do have a legal obligation to pay mitigation that's identified in CIPA. But the difference is that it's unclear what it's going to negotiate to be. This, there is really, you pay the fee or you submit an independent impact fee assessment, which is, most people don't do that because it's a lot of work. So it's just, most people just say, I'm just going to pay the fee and be done with this thing.
Director.
Well, I just potentially wanted to emphasize it's eligible impact costs. It doesn't mean that we're anticipating the growth level, for example, but it's the total pie that we've considered could be eligible for impact fee payments, basically.
Yeah, yeah, so if if growth is slower, you're not going to raise as much money, but you don't need as many projects. Growth is faster, you'll raise more money, but you'll need more projects. So it scales, it deliberately scales with with growth, so we don't have to have a crystal ball per se.
So I think that probably feeds into my question here around the the calculation, calculation of the fee per trip tool, I'll call it. So eligible project list costs, totally understand that, that we can jump down to line item number six resulting impact fee costs. Okay, so rounded off seventeen million. How do you, I guess I'm struggling with line item seven. And what does line item eight mean when it talks about cost per peak hour?
Yeah.
Person trip in.
Let me, I'm going to share just so everybody can follow along here with the rate study. So let me jump down to Would you mind referring what page you're on?
Oh, I'm sorry, page number one hundred and fifty?
Oh, that's going to be of the packet. Of the packet, Elvis. Okay, this this one here. So, yeah. So, yes, I, we're, we got, I think everyone's tracking that seventeen million dollars is sort of what we're legally allowed to charge the fee. This number is based on that twenty-year growth forecast from the comprehensive plan. That's, if you look at all the growth that was allocated to the city that we're planning for, so it's like the mill site's a pretty big part of that. But there's some infill housing that's assumed, there's growth of office and other types of uses in in the ridge. When you, when you look at, well, all those expected amount of growth and you figure out how many trips are generated in the P M peak hour, and this is sort of techno babble, that's the unit that we typically use because everybody calculates that trip rate because that's what folks are looking for for safety impacts, or if you're trying to do a traffic signal evaluation. So it's a common number that everyone's going to be generating. That's the total cumulative growth and how many more person trips they're going to be in the P M peak hour with all the growth forecast. So it's basically at that point, sixteen million dollars divided by nearly three thousand gets you that cost per new trip that somebody is adding to the system. And that, again, that's what I was fundamentally, what we're assessing the fee on is how many more people are, is your development going to be adding net, net new people to the system? And that's your fair share of the cost is that number.
Okay, so the P M peak hour person trip ends, is that does that correlate to population growth?
Yes, population, employment, any sort of activity, visitor activity, it's all of that together.
Councilmember Johnson.
So two of the projects that were on the list identified in the packet that I wanted to ask about the first, actually, one of them was, one of them wasn't, was the S R two O two bridge. And just curious if we could expect some help from the state since it's their road.
Yeah, so the, so that's a good point. This this bridge comes up every time we kind of look at a a transportation issue here in the city because it's old and it does have some capacity issues. We do assume that the vast majority of that is going to be paid for by WashDOT. However, we did take a portion of funding that says if we as Snoqualmie want to provide a higher quality, likely going to be more focused on a multimodal facility, sort of as part of that bridge, given that a little bit of funding is what we're expecting to do because otherwise it's that, that's a, that's a pretty large project that the city itself wouldn't take on.
And then follow up, another item that was not on the list, but going back to the mill site, I think, was the Fisher intersection was the one that been identified as perhaps needing an upgrade. Was that somewhere hidden on here?
So, yeah, no, we we went back and forth a little bit with with Public Works and our staff team on what we generally lumped into as comprehensive plan traffic mitigation.
Okay.
So a number of intersections around the city showed up as potentially needing an improvement. But it it varies a little bit. It's like, where exactly is the growth going to occur? We didn't want to sort of pencil in too much detail because then your hands are somewhat tied. So we have a program that we're funding. So if that intersection popped up as meeting a signal warrant and dealing with a growth at the mill site, for example, it would be eligible to have the mill site pay the fee and then use that funding to help build that intersection out, for example.
Okay, and then last thing was, was the growth model based on, I believe the numbers came from the Department of Commerce that had us expanding over the next couple of decades by something like fifteen hundred units or something like that. And we put in a request for a modification of some sort to that. I'm not sure where the status of that is. Just curious if that's where the model came from, was from that original.
Tackle that. I said, I don't know the full, so the numbers come from kind of a convoluted process. They come from the the state, then they get passed down through P S R C, who then works with King County to allocate all the growth expected in the region to each community. So we have to plan to that per the G M A, but I don't know of sort of any history of negotiating or changes on that front.
Yeah, that's right. We're in the, in the process of negotiation and in the process of change. And and the county has recognized that we we do need a reconciliation, and so we came to the, yeah, we came to the council to explain that we were reconciling for a difference. So instead of fifteen hundred, it would be seven ninety-one. And our transportation forecasting and modeling has been projected out to use that number as well as
Second number.
The seven ninety-one, yeah, as well as the the entire set of all the elements in the comprehensive plan. The entire comprehensive plan has been designed to accommodate seven ninety-one.
Thank you. That's exactly what my question was.
Perfect. Chair, can I ask a question?
Yes, yes, Madam Mayor.
So the comprehensive plan intersection traffic mitigation. So this is more than just one stoplight. This is multiple places you have already identified.
Correct.
So would that include over near like ninety-ninth?
Correct.
Street across there, okay. And so we're saying, I mean, there would be different funders there, right? My King County might be the city and might be maybe whoever's on that road, or if there's any type of development that goes in there. We have the impact fees. And you're also stating that the city is going to invest. And so the city, there's a certain portion that, you know, we're going to have to, is having our capital, our I T A P, and then our capital improvement plan for that investment.
Yeah, there, there is, there's flexibility in terms of the, the idea is that all these projects are eligible to be built. And if you were to grow to the full expectation over twenty years, then the intent is that pretty much the vast majority of these projects would be implemented and underway. For example, like the S R two O two, you're not going to move forward with that without WashDOT's participation. So that 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 is a type of project that is heavily dependent on somebody else. But some of the more city-driven projects, yeah, there might be some capital, local funding, but a lot of it is really expected for grants and other sources that you can secure and then invest on behalf of the city. But what the impact fee dollars do is they can substitute directly one for one for general fund dollars. So that gives them a lot of power that you otherwise would say, hey, we'd love to get this project done. It requires a twenty percent match. You can use impact fees to make that match happen, which is why they typically are an accelerator to projects because it's, general fund dollars are often highly spoken for.
Director, do you have a question?
No question. I guess I'll just have a comment, basically, is this is the primary mechanism in which we have growth, pay for growth. You'll see that this not only here, but also when we further discuss the utility rate study, you're going to hear something about G F Cs. There's methodologies that go into this that are well-established and prescribed basically by law for the most part. So a lot of detailed technical analysis has gone into here. I think it's an important revenue source for our capital improvement plan. It will help us in the future as well. Obviously, you can't guarantee development necessarily, but it is a mechanism in place that we can have to help us with sort of capacity enhancements and things like that across the board that we do have as a part of our tip here, our comprehensive plan and so on. So this is an important mechanism that I support as the Finance Director, getting on board. We will have to go through an update process so we don't just set it and then forget it for the next twenty years. It's something that we have to continuously update because the project list is going to continuously update as we go on into the future. So anyway, with that said, that's my one comment. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Director. Councilmember Johnson.
Yeah, one last concern to kind of mull over is that a lot of our need for growth, especially with regard to housing, is more at the affordable range. And the more things you add on that costs, the harder it can become to fund those kinds of projects. So I guess kind of two tiers of questions would be, one is what kind of, I guess, allowances there for any sort of negotiation about this with regard of affordable housing? Do we even want to have that? Yeah, I guess, sort of along those lines.
So, and I have to admit, I didn't remember, I read the ordinance a little while back, but I don't remember the details of it. The law does allow a, an exemption for affordable housing has to meet requirements that are stipulated in the law. That's optional for you all to implement that. And you can implement an entire exemption or any number thereof. A common one is eighty percent exemption. So that's Um, so that's a bit of a policy call that you all are in a good position to sort of, uh, mull over and make a decision on. But the, there's a legal framework that recognizes that, yes, fees add some burden to affordability. And so there is a, a mechanism for you all to exercise some discretion at that front.
And I'd assume that that could be kind of scaled to the project if, let's say that, um, you know, eighty percent of the units are supposed to be market rate, twenty percent are supposed to be at eighty percent AMI, that we could scale the fee to that.
Correct. Yes, you can, you can break apart, um, but they, there would have to be, as is typical, they have to be recorded sort of, um, uh, on the deed that those are market rate housing. If that, uh, reverts to become, excuse me, uh, affordable, if it reverts to become market rate, then you have the option to assess the fee at that point.
Oh, okay.
In your draft ordinance, um, low impact or low income housing in residentially targeted areas would be exempt from a traffic impact fee program and collection of the rates.
Okay, thank you.
Um, yeah, I just kind of had a devil's advocate question here, just on the other side. I mean, this, this is a great program. We need it. We haven't had this. From what I understand, with the mill site and others, it's been negotiated kind of all of car, um, à la carte. So I guess my question is, um, now having something like this in place, could it, you know, stifle growth in Snoqualmie where maybe developers say, okay, well, you have an impact fee, uh, scheduled in place. We don't, you know, we're, we're going to shy away and go somewhere else. Do you ever see that happen?
So I think, um, it's important to recognize if you were the only impact fee community in this area, I'd say that that could be an argument that one could make. Um, but you're not the only community. In fact, you're one of the only communities that does not have an impact fee. So in some respects, if that was a big sway of development, investment, you would be seeing more growth here than you might otherwise. I don't, the, the economists are somewhat divided on this. A lot of people view that impact fees have more to do with what the land value is because you can only sell a house for so much. You can only lease office space for so much. So the impact fees affect sort of the price of the, the land. Because people will say, well, I don't care if I'm in, you know, Snoqualmie or North Bend for the, if the house is exactly the same otherwise. So I would say that it's unlikely to, particularly because the impact fee is not terribly high. Um, and all the, uh, when, when you're comparing it to the surrounding jurisdictions. I am pretty certain that me, next week, uh, I wouldn't be surprised if a representative from a, like a building industry association might say, hey, this, these are burdensome, um, they propose, proposed, uh, uh, or they, uh, pose challenges to development. I'm not going to argue with them one way or the other. I'm just saying that, um, you are the outlier in not having these. They pay them routinely in nearly every other community in this state, so.
Okay, Councilmember Johnson.
Yeah, I think that list, uh, that you had of the different jurisdictions and where, uh, can we pull that back up? Uh, I, I would, uh, I would guess that most developers, uh, when they look at development and stuff, that they're going to be aware of the other cities and, and what they're charging and that, uh, they're probably going to look at ours and go, well, they finally have one, but it's not bad.
I think that's a pretty fair characterization, um, that, yep, they're on board and the, the, the fee is not that, not that high.
Yeah, I mean, we look at the top, North Bend, Samamish, Bothell, Renton, Issaquah, yeah. These are, these are our neighbors that are at the top of that list and we're pretty far down.
I don't know which one I'm more impressed with, Councilmember Johnson, your eyesight or your arc?
Yeah, this is, it, I, it is pretty small, but I didn't want to sort of truncate it too much and then say, oh, we're at the top, so.
Proud of my twenty twenty vision.
Yeah, yeah, because I, I can barely see it on the screen. Um, so when we're kind of looking at that red arrow, is that inclusive of what we're looking at for the current impact fee schedule? Or kind of looking broadly at how this impact fee would impact our number? So is that inclusive?
Yeah, yes, this is, the rate study that is, uh, uh, appended is where that number lies.
Okay, so yeah, no, I mean, I feel really good about it seeing that, you know, I don't know. A dozen, at least a dozen and a half below, uh, below our neighbor there, North Bend, so.
Yeah, they are, um, there's a whole story behind why they're high, but they're, they're high, they're the highest in the state.
Okay. Good.
Yes, one more question. Are these adjusted annually then?
Um, that is, uh, your, your decision. Um, many cities adjust them to match construction price inflation. So they've been, we pulled these numbers up from three years ago. These are a lot higher than they were because everybody knows what's happened, so.
Councilmember Watt.
I'm good. Thank you for the work.
Of course.
Makes my job easier.
Uh, Councilmember Johnson.
So if this is in, uh, ordinance form and, uh, I didn't hear any recommendations for changes from the committee, uh, then, um, I think we could forward this on to, to council for a first reading, uh, but probably not on consent. I think that we should make sure that, uh, the public has had ample opportunity to hear about what it is and our fellow council members would probably appreciate a rundown if we're, uh, considering adding a new fee to our schedule.
And I don't, I don't think we can put an ordinance on consent.
The, yeah. There's a, there is a public hearing requirement for this, if you may connect it.
Yeah.
So consensus to move this forward?
So there is a public hearing required?
That is correct. Yes.
Can we do that at first or second hearing?
Can we, well, I, I guess there are a couple of questions that come to mind. Um, I don't know, probably don't want to skip the second reading.
No.
So if we were to put this for the first reading, it would be counts the twenty-fifth, right? For the first, do we have enough time to bring this for the next council meeting on the twenty-fifth?
It's on for a first reading on the twenty.
Okay, on the twenty-fifth, and then we, we have the one meeting, council meeting in December, so we could do a second reading effectively. Okay. So, so, uh, December ninth?
For the public hearing, would that typically occur during the first or second reading? Not during, but.
Is it doing both?
Usually done at once.
So the hearing would be at the next meeting on the twenty-fifth?
On the first reading.
Yeah.
So do you, have you advertised for it?
Oh, I, I need to double check with David. It's my understanding is that we could have a hearing at, like we do for, for city council, like we do for all these ordinances that we pass through.
Right, but it takes like a couple of weeks to advertise.
I don't, I'm not sure there's a, a special advertising component necessary for it if we're advertising like we do for a city council meeting and have a first reading of an ordinance. So, I mean, I'll, I'll double check on that. And if we need to make an adjustment to the schedule, we could, but this.
Otherwise it'll be on December ninth.
Yeah.
For the, for the first reading, Madam Mayor?
No.
For the second reading?
Public hearing.
For the public hearing.
Public hearing either time, I believe, so.
I see. And we have to, how much time do we have to allow for the public hearing?
Well, I believe that we were going to consult with the city attorney on the public hearing.
Perfect, perfect. Thank you.
Let, let the administration figure that out.
Sounds good. Looks like we have a consensus. Let's move it forward.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for your times. Thank you for the hard work on this.
Yes, thank you.
And thank you to staff as well. Did you guys, did you want to go forward with the legislative priorities? Have a conversation on legislative priority. Okay, so, um, the next, um, item of business brings us to our discussion item, which is two thousand and twenty-five legislative priorities. And at this particular time, I'm going to turn over the meeting to Director Artecha to start our conversation on that.
Yeah, um, last time we were talking about legislative priorities, we had indicated that we had a desire to learn more about the impacts of REIT, um, especially as it with regards to affordable housing. So we attempted to get Drew, our Director of Finance, Drew Battano available, and, um, he's here. Um, so I, I, I think it would be prudent to go ahead and pick up where we ended up with that conversation. And, um, then we can move on to the next topic after that.
Okay, sounds good. Thank you very much, Director. So I'll just kind of start things out here, Director. Um, I think I had a question, if my memory serves me correctly. Uh, just looking at REIT, kind of the idea for, or the, the thought for me is that REIT's always been, um, a funding source for capital, right, for capital funding. And now we're seeing it here for, uh, affordable housing. And there was just some confusion on the current source of REIT. Is it, is it capital affordable funding? Or is it strictly only for capital funding?
Yeah, so currently we've got it scheduled, uh, as a part of our capital improvement plan. Back in twenty nineteen, the state legislature incorporated affordable housing as a part of the overall uses of REIT two, which is the second quarter percent of REIT that the city collects overall. So consequently, uh, if you were to take, to take a look at the eligible uses, it would include streets, roads, highways, highways, sidewalks, streets and road lighting systems, traffic signals, bridges, domestic water systems, or sanitary sewer systems, parks. And then until January one of twenty twenty-six, the planning, acquisition, construction, reconstruction, repair, replacement, rehabilitation, or improvement of facilities for those experiencing homelessness and affordable housing projects. So it is basically a new allowable use only until twenty twenty-six, January one of twenty twenty-six. Um, in addition to that, uh, we can only use a certain amount of the REIT two that we have collected overall. So we can use up to one hundred thousand dollars or twenty-five percent of our available REIT two funds, which is whichever is greater, but not to exceed one million dollars. So I would say roughly right now, we've got about a limit of eight hundred thousand dollars or so that could be potentially applied to affordable housing. Part of the challenge, however, is you do need to incorporate it into your CIP. And you have already projects incorporated into that CIP. This would compete with funding sources or those projects basically for refunding overall. Um, we came up with a financially sound plan back then, but we do certainly intend to spend. We want to put the money into use, right, for public benefit overall. And so I can certainly read off the list or the projects as a part of that list overall. Um, but we can certainly apply REIT two dollars to, um, affordable housing, specifically the construction, reconstruction, repair, replacement. If we need to, in expanding the REIT authority, REIT authority that you see here, uh, potentially can include extending the date. So instead of having it just end on January one of twenty twenty-six, extending that date, there's other additional revenue options available to us. That would be fantastic to incorporate for affordable housing as well. Um, in addition, if, you know, we're concerned about the definition of what is affordable housing, uh, that goes from zero to sixty percent AMI usually, maybe expanding that up to eighty percent, for example, might be beneficial. Uh, so just creating as much capacity as we can with the definition legally, right, overall, to be able to give you the resources that you need to accomplish your goals and priorities for the city.
Thank you. Thank you for that, Director.
In addition, I'll just also remark, uh, that we do have an affordable housing fund. I've got lots of additional information here for the most part.
We appreciate it.
We expect to have about one point seven two five million dollars in affordable housing funds sitting inside of our affordable housing. Well, funds for affordable housing sitting inside of Fund One Thirty-One, which is our affordable housing fund in total. Of that, roughly one point three four is tied to the point one, uh, percent affordable housing sales tax. Um, roughly sixty-five thousand dollars is tied to the sales tax credit that we currently receive from the state. Um, another two hundred seventy thousand dollars is tied to, um, basically a payment that we received back in twenty eighteen to close out the affordable housing for the Kimball Creek Village, um, back then. And then in addition to that, uh, we still have, I think we've wrapped up some grants recently as well. That was part of the overall fund balance that we had currently. Um, so with that said.
How much came from the sales tax again, that first number?
The first number, one point three four, what we're expected to start with for twenty twenty-five. I think it's important to note as well what the affordable, that point one percent sales tax could be used for. That we have to keep in mind, um, could be used for the construction or acquiring affordable housing, constructing or acquiring behavioral health-related facilities, acquiring land for those purposes or funding the operation and maintenance costs of new affordable housing units and facilities within which housing-related programs are provided. Uh, in addition to that, uh, for those to be able to use those funds, uh, it needs to support population groups whose income is at or below sixty percent of the median income of the county imposing the tax. Or for us, I guess King County would qualify. In terms of those population groups that we need to consider to apply this money to, would include persons with behavioral health disabilities, veterans, senior citizens, persons who are homeless or at risk of being homeless, including families with children, unaccompanied homeless youth or young adults, persons with disabilities or domestic violence survivors. And so consequently, those are the population groups in which we can apply this point one percent, uh, sales tax to. And it may, um, certainly as a part of your legislative priorities, you may want to expand that list through those population groups in which we can apply this money towards.
Councilmember Johnson.
If memory serves, that, uh, sales tax wasn't implemented all that long ago, that it was twenty eighteen, nineteen, somewhere in that range?
Yes, correct. I would say about, I feel like December of twenty twenty or early twenty twenty-one.
That was even later I thought, okay. But it, it's accumulated quickly.
It has. Um, so if I were to go take a look at my lovely budget book right here.
Uh, Councilmember Watt.
Eh, I think my memory serves me, we're, we're gaining about six hundred and forty-eight thousand or somewhere around that every year from the sales tax.
So we're expected to, for twenty twenty-five, collect roughly four hundred thousand dollars, uh, in total. A small chunk of that's going to be that affordable housing sales tax credit that we receive from the state. But the vast majority of that is going to be, be point one percent, uh, affordable housing sales tax. So roughly four hundred thousand dollars annually.
Councilmember Watt.
So I think getting back to Councilmember Johnson's comment of putting everything on one page, I think there are two important things. One is the state can, can increase the commitment to state revolving fund for affordable housing through the Housing Finance Commission. That's one. The other part is the state also needs to assist us with wraparound services to go with it. Because we've got kind of this competing thing. The Growth Management Act says you have to go through the Department of Commerce. They determine the number of units and then they determine the AMI and all that. And we know that there are challenges trying to meet that. Just one on the housing stock, but the other side is those other support services that we lack. And I think if we can put that in the context of affordable housing as a priority, but the state also needs to assist us with supportive services. I, I think that, and we, we don't, we really don't need to specify which House bill, which Senate bill, because there's going to be a dozen of them. But we just want to highlight that. And then the other thing is to make sure that smaller communities under twenty thousand like us get a fair shake. Because most of the emphasis has been going to the larger cities, especially transit-oriented development, which we don't even have a shot at because we don't have metro service.
Councilmember Johnson.
Yeah, so then I suppose, uh, a- as far as the actual product of our, um, legislative priorities and what we actually phrase, uh, perhaps instead of stating this specific bill, uh, we could make a little bit more broad of things like, you know, expanding, uh, possible uses for, uh, REIT or extensions to various timelines and we could use. uh we could make a little bit more broad of things like, you know, expanding uh possible uses for uh REIT or, or extensions to various timelines when we could use REIT for those purposes. Increasing other sources that we could use first uh for affordable housing and uh additional support for wraparound services. And it's a little bit more broad than pinpointing that this specific bill is the one. Because again, uh who knows if this exact bill will come up again. Um. Yeah, so I, I, I support the idea of, of making it a little more broad and covering a few more of the needs uh besides just expanding uses for REIT and that sort of thing.
So are we thinking specifically, you know, asking for the, the help with wraparound services as it relates to affordable housing residents?
Along those lines.
Because the first thing I would say is that, okay, totally hear you, but then we do have a population in our city um that needs help with wraparound services as well, who, who don't have affordable housing.
So uh one of the things that I thought that I heard in uh Director Bute's description of what we could use these funds for was uh sixty percent AMI along with a list of uh some groups that tend to be underserved. Um, and yeah, so uh affordable housing can mean a very catchall term. It can be a very broad note that isn't actually even specifically talking about the affordable housing stuff. But uh that there are groups that uh that tend to uh have higher needs for um housing. Um, and in my mind, it kind of includes those things and those groups.
So, so keep it pretty general. So we're, we're thinking, okay.
Housing and wraparound services for historically underserved and high needs groups? Along those lines? Perhaps could be a better way to phrase it?
Director?
There you.
Oh, Madam Mayor, sir.
I'm just looking at um, so AWC for instance, so dedicate current funding and explore real estate transfer tax to address needs across the housing continuum, including home ownership, um senior workforce, affordable and permanent supportive housing. Ensure that funding availability extends to all communities with needs, including small and medium sized cities and towns. So I mean, there's could be, some of those wording could be removed, but basically we want them to explore all types of funding options. That makes each one of those areas um accessible to us because we're not only looking for affordable housing and workforce housing, we also need senior workforce housing and permanent and PSH, so. So, you know, I think some of these things on AWC, yeah, we can copy them or we can say, and we support AWC's legislative priorities as well regarding housing supply.
Councilmember Johnson.
Yeah, I wonder if just getting basically a copy of uh of that uh would be a little bit more powerful in that here's some texts that our legislators have heard. And I'm not sure uh what the law is regarding plagiarism, but but I think that could be useful uh to just kind of reiterate that uh many cities are asking for these things and it would make us less the oddball out in a way. It could be that we're using a louder voice of more communities um to use the, that phrasing. Or something similar.
Well, this gives us opportunity to kind of mimic what AWC, but put our own spin on it. Because we only care about ourselves.
It's our legislative priorities.
So I um understand the housing supply, will we taking a line or two from the behavioral health treatment capacity as well? Did I hear that correctly? Okay.
We just talked about that in public safety where we are the one team to hopefully getting additional behavioral health funding for mental health specialists.
Okay.
And I think that the two are kind of be bifurcated because, you know, when we're talking about affordable housing, the other piece goes with it. Could be childcare services onsite, childcare services. Where that's not necessarily behavioral health. I think, you know, wraparound services can be a little broader, but definitely agree on the behavioral health because that has a huge impact on our public safety as well.
Good progress.
You're going to fit that then to Mayor Pro Tim Holloway or I think he's supposed to like
Okay.
Put it all together.
So I'll um kind of glean some of this and submit it over to Councilmember Holloway. And um what's kind of the working due date, Madam Mayor, that you, I mean, soon, but
Yeah, we're actually reviewing it at council meeting on Monday.
Okay.
And then I have reached out to our legislatures to see if they're available to meet on December ninth.
Okay.
So we may have some, some there. I think there's also a new House Legislatures meeting that week, so we might come up with another date for the House Legislatures, maybe meet, meet senators, we'll, we'll figure it out, so.
Hang on one second, Councilmember Johnson. So the idea is to have this ready to go for our Monday council meeting? So we can discuss.
Our draft, absolutely.
But so we can discuss it as, as a whole.
And hopefully approve it. So then by December ninth, which would be the next council meeting.
Right.
We can start sending this out and we can send it to our legislatures and say this will be talking about and maybe bring their ideas.
Okay, okay. Councilmember Johnson.
Do you happen to know when uh the vote will be certified? Would it be, yeah, I don't know. It's okay. End of November, okay. I was just wondering if it would technically be before the next week. I, I don't think that any of the seats are contested, but it'd just be nice if we can.
Right, but it is, well, it's this month, so.
Okay, yeah, it's that time. If that um, if that's all, then uh if there are no, if there, can't talk today. If there's nothing, if there's nothing uh further uh business to become, to come before the committee, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Move second.
Agreement at seven PM.